Able to go here.
Hello?
Hello? Was that Randy?
Probably.
Are you out there, Ann?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, ready to start here then. Call the order of the regular common council meeting, Monday, August 3rd, 7:03 PM. Rule call.
Braun.
Yes.
Langen.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Radke.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Next item is Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
.............................................
Confirmation or appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting was noticed on Friday, July 31st. Agendas were posted at the post office, library, and city hall.
Thank you. Council acceptance of agenda.
Motion to accept.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, rule call.
Davis.
Yes.
Langen.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Radke.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is a public hearing. City council will hold a public hearing to hear comments regarding special assessments for the Henderson Street cul-de-sac project. Want to give them background or...
Could that be helpful? Okay, as part of the resurfacing projects of Henderson Street, which is scheduled for later this year, a cul-de-sac will be added to the end of the street. That street will not be extended because it extends into land that has been committed for parkland. So, as part of the 2020 budget and also when you awarded the construction contract for that project, the cul-de-sac has been included in both of those conversations. So, according to city policy, improvements that are installed for the first time are assessable to a benefiting property owner. A portion of the cost of the following improvements, the list there provided being pavement, driveway apron, curb and gutter, and gravel for a driveway would be the improvements that would benefit the one adjoining property owner that isn't the city. So today is the public hearing for that, and then after taking testimony, you will consider a resolution. In that resolution are three blanks for you to fill in. Interest rate, minimum assessment amount to be financed, and the number of years the owner would have to repay the assessment. And then there's some information about prior assessments and what we have used in the past to fill in those blanks.
Thank you. Do we want the podium set up? The microphone. We'll officially open the public hearing. If there's anyone that wishes to speak on this, please stand up at the podium, state your name and address for the record.
I'm Debbie Benoit, and I'm at 112 Henderson. And I just wanted to make sure, see, the way that my driveway is, is I have to have some room to make a Y-turn there to get out of my driveway and go down the street because I'm the last house, okay, on the street, and there's like no driveway across from me or anything. So I just wanted to make sure that when you did this cul-de-sac thing, that I had enough room to get out of my driveway. I wasn't sure about that so that I could make a Y-turn.
I would think with the cul-de-sac, there should be plenty of room because you're supposed to almost be able to make the turnaround up there without it.
Yeah, well, see, I didn't understand if it was like going to stop at my driveway or is it going to extend beyond my driveway. I just didn't understand that.
Actually, the pavement actually stops before your driveway, so off the end of the cul-de-sac where your driveway currently runs will be reinstalled, a gravel driveway, so that it will connect to your driveway where it leaves your property.
Well, I thought you were going to put it, on the letter, it says you're going to put a driveway apron?
Yes.
But that's not concrete?
That is.
It is a concrete apron, but then the part of your driveway that is left between the end of your property and the end of the cul-de-sac, the apron, is gravel, like it is now.
Well, how far is this cul-de-sac going to go up? I mean, see, I don't have a picture in my head. Okay, here's my driveway, and here's the street, and it ends like right here, and I have to go up and get into my...
It's about halfway across your lot between your property line and the driveway, the cul-de-sac, about halfway across that distance. So here's the, I can show you where the property line is on here.
Yeah, I have, see.
Here's your property line, right here. So that's your lot. Here's your existing driveway. So the cul-de-sac goes about...
Well, that doesn't help me at all.
This, well, they actually, it improves significantly the, your lot, because now your lot is a legal lot because there's a dedication of a road right-of-way here. So before, you had no dedicated road in front of you. So part of this process...
Well, why can't you extend it up to my driveway like everybody else in town?
It would be very expensive to do that. It would be very expensive for you to do that and for the city to do that, so we were trying to reduce the cost.
Okay, well, whatever. So basically, I'm not going to have anything better than I have now. Supposedly, I have no legal lot, and it becomes legal. Isn't that, so that's what you're telling me?
The cul-de-sac could be extended. It's, you know, it's designed to be as cost-effective as possible so as to reduce the special assessment.
Well, if you got a cur... So, but...
Could you please...
...
I'm sorry. Ma'am, I'm sorry, could you continue to speak? We have a couple people on the phone. Thank you.
I've never done this before.
That's fine.
Okay, so see, I'm very unclear about this curb and gutter. Are you going to put the curb and gutter up on my property line? So now I have a curb on my property?
No, it will not be on your property. It will be within the dedicated right-of-way, not on your property, on city property.
Well, where is the curb going to stop? See, I...
That's fine. Here's the existing curb. This line designates the curb.
Uh-huh.
So this is the new part of the curb that comes around and does this. So that's the curb, and then it joins back in the curb on the other side.
Well, so I'm supposed to go over the curb?
No, there will be an apron. There will be no curb here, so there'll be a backless curb.
Oh, okay.
And then a driveway, a concrete apron, and then from that point forward, we will just restore your gravel driveway.
Okay.
So the alternative would be to extend the cul-de-sac all the way to the east end of your property. That would be a very expensive endeavor for the city and for you.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I just didn't understand the way it was going to work. When you said driveway, you're going to put, like everybody else has, has a concrete apron and gravel.
Yes.
That will be done. Yeah, that's about it.
Yes. It isn't, it isn't right in front of the house like you, maybe you were envisioning.
So that's why you're doing every other house in town, so that's what I envisioned, so, okay.
But the homeowners are responsible for putting their driveway all the way up to their garage door, their front door?
Oh, yes, I understand that.
Okay.
But everybody else has a new street, and when you go and put in a new street, everybody gets a new driveway apron. That's included with the street.
And I understand you are too.
But I'm not going to get that.
I understand you are. You're getting an apron, is that correct?
Howard, do you want to...
Okay, yes, you are.
If I have my driveway, it's an apron to get out of my driveway on the city street, and I have to go about 50 feet to get to the apron from my driveway.
That's where, that's where the legislator was saying if we extended it farther, it would be more costly, and then it would be right in front of your driveway, but this way, you're still getting a lot more pavement road than you had in the past here.
So, okay, so this circular thing is going to cut into my property?
No, no.
Well, if it's not going to cut into my property, what am I paying for?
We're going to have to ever get the mic back again because, I don't know if Ann can hear out there.
We have people on the phone.
I know, you told me once, I just keep forgetting.
So the rule is if someone has a house and a subdivision, and it has no improvements, if it's a lot, an unimproved lot, when those improvements go in for the first time, whether it be curb and gutter, sidewalk, road, the adjoining property owners are responsible.
Right, right.
Okay.
But I was told that it was illegal to have unimproved driveway on a city street. That's what I was told two years ago, that you couldn't, that I could not put in a gravel driveway because that is illegal.
Well, the...
That's what I was told two years ago.
There is a permit process we have, which we spoke about at that meeting regarding private improvements and a public right-of-way.
Right.
So you could have pursued that, and your gravel driveway was not in a right-of-way then because there was no right-of-way. You had a lot that had no frontage. So as part of this process, the city...
No, this, when I bought the property, it had a right-of-way. When I purchased it, it had a right-of-way.
There was an easement, and you still have that easement?
A right-of-use and easement, yeah.
Yeah, but there was no publicly dedicated street there, so that is...
Right.
Okay. So now I'm, so I'm sorry, your question again is?
Well, I was told that I couldn't put gravel there. So what, if the gravel gets all rutted, then you're going to fix it?
No, everything beyond the apron is your driveway, and you have an easement to have it there.
Okay, all right.
Again, the council could consider an extension of the road. It would, you know, it would...
No, that's all right, because I think last time you wanted to pay about $40,000 worth of money.
Deb, Deb, I'm on Public Works too, so, yeah, we did go around and around several times on this and where to put this and how far to go.
Yeah.
Anything further would be, yeah, it'd be really assessment a lot more than what it is, not to mention costing the city a lot more, you know, tens of thousands more. So, yeah, we did discuss a couple years ago and what your expense would be if we went all the way up. It was too outrageous to even consider. But right now, we need to clean it up. We want to make it, you know, halfway decent up there and give you something more than you've got to keep that going. Okay? Is that good? Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this matter under the public If not, we will officially close the public hearing and move on to consider payment terms and adoption of City of Edgerton Resolution 1120, preliminary resolution declaring the city council's intentions for Henderson Street cul-de-sac project to be, to exercise special assessment police powers under Section 66.0703 Wisconsin statutes. Now, everybody saw what we had done in the past, which was just last year for some of those sidewalks, wasn't it?
We did Sweeney last year, and Chaucer Street was our, the example we used in the staff report because it contains some curb and gutter as well as sidewalk.
So, Chaucer was 18, yeah, two years ago? Sweeney was last year.
Sweeney was last year, yep.
Can we do each, each one individually here, Bill? Each of the blanks individually by a motion, or shall we agree to it?
You can do it either. I think the most common way is to put it all together.
Agree to, agree to, and then have somebody make the motion?
I will make a motion to approve special assessments at 3.5% with a 10-year term and a minimum payment of finance to be $200.
Motion to second, was that to approve the adoption? Okay, the microphone's gone now, so...
I'll try to talk louder. Now, so the 3%, is that 3% of the total annually, or is it 3% as, is it compounded, or is it simple?
Simple.
Okay, so if I had $1,000, then the 3%...
Is only on the remaining?
... proportionately.
Correct. And we're talking 3.5%? I said 3.5, did I not? Okay. I just want to make sure that you're clear, that, I mean, so there's no misunderstanding. Thank you.
Is the motion to include the adopt City of Edgerton Resolution with those numbers in it?
Oh, yes, I'd like to include in my motion then, based on those terms, to adopt the City of Edgerton Resolution 11-20 with those terms.
I will second again.
We're good with that as one motion now, aren't we, Bill?
Yes.
Any further discussion on the resolution?
Do we have to bill the homeowner for this?
Do we have to?
Your, it's your practice, your policy, your decision. It's been, it's been customary that new improvements are assessed to the homeowners. But it's not required.
Well, I think that, I don't know if it's just, you would be the one homeowner, right? I don't know if it's just her that's benefiting from this. Seems like if we needed to clean up a dirty road, most people...
Well, the garbage trucks can't get in and out of there, and the policy can't get in and out. They have a very difficult time. Policemen have a difficult time getting in and out of there. So it's more of a city service adjustment because they do have a difficult time.
Right, if this is a city service issue and if, not the whole city, but a lot of people in this neighborhood are going to benefit, I don't know if passing the bill just to one individual is really fair.
Because one individual isn't paying for all of it, you recognize that, right? This is a small portion of it, the city's paying the rest of it, and all the taxpayers are?
We're billing her $5,000, is that what we...
Yes, $5,000, and that's about a third is the cost, or a quarter of the cost.
And that is because some of, the improvement is going to be to her property.
And the, the city is the adjoining property owner for the rest of it? That's why the citizens are paying for the rest of it? So $5,000 isn't the whole cost, just in case you were unaware of that.
It's a, the city owns the other three, just quarters. She only has a quarter, so she's getting billed basically a quarter of the cost. The city taxpayers are paying up the rest. So, yeah, they benefit and they pay for it. She benefits a quarter, that's what a standard policy.
The reason why special assessments occur is because other people that have curb and gutter and sidewalk and all the improvements in their house have paid for that as part of their house. So when those new improvements go in, and the logic is that not everyone in the city should have to pay for curb and gutter that they've already paid for on their own property? So that's kind of the basic logic of a special assessment about new improvements?
I understand that. My saying is that a lot more than just her are going to benefit from this.
Here's another way to think of it.
That's why the city's paying, that's why the city's doing this, that's why Public Works is putting this in.
So, here's, here's an example also.
Yes.
When you have sidewalks, and you have sidewalks put in, so if I have a sidewalk put in my front yard, right, it's mandatory to have a sidewalk. I don't own that sidewalk, that's for anybody to use, pedestrians, it's for the benefit of anybody who wants to walk, et cetera. I'm responsible for shoveling it, making sure it's kept clean and clear. If, if there's, if one of them breaks or heaves, same thing, I'm responsible to pay for it. Everybody else can use it, it's for the benefit of anybody who wants to walk, but I am responsible for taking care of that, making sure it's maintained and paid for. That's, that's a lower, little bit less example, but it's the same thing. Everybody...
If there was a private lot owner on the other side of the cul-de-sac, they would be getting billed for their portion of it rather than the city paying for it because we are the rest of the owners up there, so that's why it's, Debbie here is the only one that's, has to be the public or the private payment.
I question the same thing you are when I first saw it too, Robert. I know she's the only one that, outside of the city, that benefits, and it's kind of just the way, just the way it came down, but I looked at, I looked at Chaucer, I'm sorry, I looked at Chaucer, I looked at Sweeney, and what we assessed those other people, and theirs was between $4,000 and $8,000 on those projects, and this came within, right, and with the scope of everything that else went on, so that's why...
We discussed various types of solutions. We wanted to find the best-case scenario essentially for both the property owner and the taxpayers.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we've been going around on this issue for a while.
Is there, is this going to increase her property's value if she goes to sell it, this type of improvement?
Usually it does.
Is there some type of way to measure how much it would be improved by?
An assessor could tell us that. I don't know what the answer is to that, but if we ask a city assessor, they would say how they change the assessment on an improved property. I don't know. Cindy, have you ever asked that question?
I have not. There's very, very few properties that don't have, already have a road access. This is a unique property. It's almost like it's landlocked because...
It is.
... there wasn't a road access to it.
Yeah, that's one of the, this is very different in that instance from any other special assessments you've done, in that this also includes the city dedicating land so that the lot is legal.
It was 3% and $200 minimum.
3.5.
3.5.
200.
3.5% interest and 200 minimum, right, is what you were saying?
To be financed with a 10-year term.
10-year term. Okay. I believe the federal rate of inflation is 1.8% in 2018 or '19. Is there anybody on staff that could confirm that?
The question is...
That's what my, that's what my increase was in social service pension, yes.
Right.
The city considers what it could borrow, it's the money at, if we were to borrow money to pay for this project, what rate would we borrow it at? Or the other way to look at it is if we're using our resources, our own savings, what interest rate are we making on that? Right now, if it happens to be in a CD, it's not making 3.5%, but it's making decent money. Other savings is significantly less. So you have the discretion to pick the interest rate, but it isn't based on, necessarily on inflation, it's based on what would the city have to pay in order to borrow this money? Or what are we foregoing in interest income by not having this money for 10 years?
So there is a bit of an opportunity cost to not get paid this money upfront.
Us, the city? Yeah, we're foregoing the interest for 10 years, income.
We're giving her...
I don't know, I feel a little bit uncomfortable charging more than inflation myself, even if there is an opportunity cost to the city.
I wonder...
Might be the dissenting opinion on that, though.
Yeah.
That's entirely up to you.
And the homeowner can always...
Prepay.
Prepay or decide to get his or her own loan at whatever percentage they want and pay for it.
All right, I'm okay with billing the homeowner, but I don't like 3.5%. That seems high. I understand there's an opportunity cost, but I think that's where I'm going to stand. I'll vote no, and then if you, if this motion fails, I can make another one to lower the interest rates. Would that be the proper procedure?
You can make an amendment to this one to lower that interest rate. It's a three-parter, so you can make that amendment, correct?
Absolutely. I meant to accept the resolution proposed with a interest rate of whatever it is.
All right, I'll make a motion to amend, main motion, to change the interest rate to 1.8% from 3.5%.
Is there a second? Is there a second? And one more time, is there a second? That motion fails for lack of second.
I'd like to make a motion to make it adjusted to 2.5%.
Second.
Motion to second for 2.5% to amend the interest rate. Any discussion on that? I know financing is hovering between that and 3% right now, so...
My only, did you say, did you ask for discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. My only question, and I'm not opposed one way or another, I just, my biggest concern would be, would, so the last time we did this was a year ago, and prior to that was that, I mean, we've been pretty consistent with this, or not?
By recollection, yes. In recent years, yes.
Okay. How would this appear to those that we charged on Chaucer and other projects? That's kind of a rhetorical question, just saying.
Understandable, I just think because of the uniqueness of the situation and where we're at, and because of the situation we're in, and we're not making 2% on anything else, and for lack of anything better, I think just to, because of the uniqueness and the situation we're in.
Another way to look at it is...
And the market tanking and everything else.
Okay.
So... Another way we could look at this is, if we did this previously, we had a different common council.
First of all, do we need a second for further discussion?
We've got a second.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me, okay.
Another way to look at it is when we've done this previously, we've had a different common council elected by the people, and if that common council set at 3.5, then that's fine, but a future common council or a present common council would be, if people got sick of paying 3.5%, then a present or future common council would be within their rights to accommodate a people's changing opinion. I ran quite heavily on property rights, and I don't, 3.5 just seems high to me. I'd like to save people that get assessed a little bit of money.
So you weren't born during the 20-some percent prime interest.
[laughing].
3.5 is pretty good, but we're not making that right now, so it's...
And I just want to assert also, and I totally understand what you're saying, Robert, I just also want to point out, we don't have a complete different common council. Some members are new, some are not.
I was just stating the philosophy that the people are free to change their opinions.
Oh, absolutely. I totally agree, absolutely.
Okay, any more discussion on the 2.5% amendment? Hearing none, rule call.
Burdick?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Braun?
Yes.
Langen?
No.
Davis?
No.
Motion passes four to two. Okay, now the original motion to adopt the resolution. Any further discussion on that now?
So we're voting to adopt the resolution based on these new terms?
With the 2.5% interest in it. Hearing no discussion, rule call.
Davis?
No.
Braun?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes. Motion passes five to one. Okay, now we will move on to personal appearances, and I know we have somebody in the audience that wishes to speak here.
Hello? I'd be very pleased. Is it okay if I approach you with just a...
Sure.
......
And we'll get the, we'll get the microphone set up on the podium then, so...
Yep, that's perfect. And I can use my outside voice, too.
Okay. As long as they can hear on, on that there, that's our main concern.
Thank you.
I'm Beth Drew. Can you all hear me on the mic or on the phone? I wanted to introduce myself and say hello this evening. I am running for the 43rd Assembly, and I will make it very brief tonight. I just wanted to stop by and drop off some, some information, just to introduce myself. I too am from Milton, as is the person that I'm running against, and I'm sorry, I missed this table. I'll come to you afterwards. I am from Milton, and I'm a small business owner, and have, I'm part of the town board there as well, so I'm really enjoying the dialogue that I'm hearing here tonight. It makes me feel as if I'm back in our own town hall. I'm a member of the Fire Commission and also of the Rock River Safety Patrol. My roots are from Milton, however, I wanted to just talk to you a little bit tonight about the gem that I call Edgerton Hospital. That's where I began my nursing career, and I am just, you have to be so proud of that hospital. It was in a different place, located down the street back in 1986, a few years ago. place, located down the street back in 1986, a few years ago. It was a fabulous place to extend my, my nursing school. I graduated from Edgewood College, and I just have to tell you that starting out as a, as a young nurse at Edgerton Hospital was a fabulous learning experience for me. So I have to compliment this community and all that you do here. Your pool, I was having a chance to talk to Ann tonight, the pool is absolutely amazing, and I just think that you have so many wonderful resources here. And the history with agriculture, it's just fantastic. So anyway, just wanted to stop by. I have a daycare and preschool. I have small business experience now, and I'm hoping that I can take that to Madison as well. Does anybody have any questions? And the cricket's chirp. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Stopping by.
I will stop by in just a second. Oh, you are? Okay.
Anyone else that wishes to speak? Sure.
Just a quick response. Matt McIntyre, Winston Drive. It's a closed session, so I'm going to do a really short, good luck with everything. An old historical building in Edgerton. I know the mayor and Ramona have been working on it, and the council members, I don't know what, but I know the person who's doing some work on it, and I helped start the historic commission, Chris and I, years ago. So there's some things that isn't being followed, but it sounds like there's something happening to an old historic building, which is a plus, and I hope good things come out of it. That's all I got to say. Good luck with everything.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, let's move on to the minutes from July 20th.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Sorry.
Okay, motion to second. Is there any corrections or additions?
Was that a Davis-Braun?
Yes. Davis-Braun. It couldn't get much better than that, does it?
Hearing no discussion, roll call, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Braun?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes. Motion passes. Okay, Finance Committee.
Finance Committee met this evening at 6:45. Motion to approve bills and payroll in the amount of $388,544.30.
Second.
Any questions on the bill? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Braun?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes. Motion passes.
Okay, and I hope I get this right. Cindy, you might have to help walk me through this, but I will make a motion to approve the amendment to premise for combination Class B beer and liquor license for 520 North Main Street. Last night, Bar and Grill, Terry Knotts, that agent, consistent with the conditional use permit by Planning Commission and not to exceed the date of June 1st, 2021.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have a question. You said June?
1st, 2021.
Okay, that's if we do the three-month extension, correct?
Correct. Right. So it's not to exceed that.
Okay.
And that gives them time to pursue the permanent if they want to.
If they want to make it permanent, essentially, yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Braun?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion to approve purchase of safety partition for Sherdrake taxi van, not to exceed $380.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Braun?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve amendment to 102 West Fulton Street facade grant ward to include concrete step repairs in the amount of $433.80.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Braun?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And that's it for finance.
Thank you. Plan Commission, will bring anything forward here tonight? I hope you brought your notes, because I didn't.
Two conditional use permits, so they don't come to council. The other one was assigned for the school.
That's right. That's right. That's what we did. It wasn't that long ago, was it? Thursday. Long time ago. Oh, okay. Fire District.
Fire District Board met for the first time in three months. Last month, July, I think it was, it was the 9th. It was also our annual meeting to hold for board election positions. So John Sherman, Sherman remains president of the Fire District. John Donner has been named vice president for the Fire District, and I remain secretary treasurer for the Fire District. And we have Chief Pickering here to give us a little update on probably a number of calls and just how things in general are working.
Kind of a predictable script, right?
Yes, exactly.
97 calls for the month of July. That's quite, well, it's a few ahead of our average. We average in the, in the mid 80s, but it was a very busy month. Relatively significant house fire out in the town of Albion, and then yet a fourth now water rescue for the year, which, as the mayor will probably attest, we haven't done four water rescues in the last 10 years, no less, just this year. It occurred in exactly the same place where we had the real tragic event last year, and so part of what we're doing is working with the DNR to see whether or not there are some things that we can do to potentially put some signage out there or something to warn inexperienced paddlers of what they are potentially going to get into if they go past some particular points. We are extremely proud. One of our interns was accepted into the Mercy Paramedic Program, so he will be remaining on for a third year. The internship is basically a two-year fire science program, but being accepted into the paramedic program, he'll stay on for a third year, so we're really excited about that. Young man's name is Seamus Murphy. And then we have our two new 2020 interns. The commission met them last month. They both started earlier this month, and it's always kind of fun to have new interns joining, so. I think that's about it. Any questions or anything I can answer for anybody? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that's it for Fire District.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Ann.
Oh, thanks.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay, next item is update on swimming pool and discuss and consider if changes are needed.
All right, so in front of you, I just have, I've taken the month of July for the five-year average and looked at pool patrons, pool revenues, and also concession revenue, revenues. And you can see for the five-year average compared to this year, we are way up on pool patrons. I think our adult swim has been helping that with adult swim and water aerobics. Both early bird swim, the addition of the Monday, Wednesday early bird swim, and then the addition of the addition, the extra water aerobics has also helped with that. Plus, we have lots of, we noticed, we've, we have lots of families coming versus individuals, and there's a lot of people from other communities coming as well, so that's really nice. So the signup for lap swim and water aerobics, using the signup genius, has been going really well. In fact, I like it so much, I think I'm going to use it for the swim lessons for next year when we go back to having some lessons. Our busiest day so far was on Saturday, last Saturday, the 25th. We had 245 people come in that first three and a half hour session for the entire time. So we have not turned a single person away for open swim, so those fast passes, even though I have them, we're not using them. So it's really nice that we're not meeting that 50% capacity. And every Saturday and Sunday in August is rented out now, so we close it at 6:30, and then we rent it out for another hour and a half, so it's an additional income that we can have for that as well, so, for revenues. I think that's about it. Mona, did you want to talk about, do we need to talk about the comparison for expenses or not?
Yeah, we, I did, Ann's looking at the snapshot for July, which is very helpful information. It gives you an idea of how the operations are working, and I think that's important for you to understand. We took a step back and looked at the entire season and projected on that, and as expected, when we took on this endeavor is, you know, the loss of the family passes is, it's a significant revenue we don't have. So expenses are down because we have, we're open for a shorter period of time, so overall, the expenses will be down, but the revenues are down significantly more. So we think that the budget deficit, it's a little, just so I'm not clear, I'm not saying the pool is going to lose $15,000. It's going to use $15,000 to $20,000 more than we expected it would lose this year.
Which we projected was seven-
A little less than what we projected, I think, if I'm not mistaken, when we were doing this without any information. So we went back and looked at the July numbers and tried to do our best to see where we are.
I think so.
You know, there's only three weeks left of operations, is that right?
Correct.
So, I mean, if you made any modifications, what we were thinking was that we would have these touch points along the way, and maybe we would modify some of the operations with only three weeks left, and a lot of people coming to the pool. I don't know that there's, it's obviously your call, but I don't know, we don't have any ideas of ways to turn any of that around, because there's a lot of people coming. We just have lost that, all of that extra revenue we have in those extra services and the family passes.
Is it standard to close around that time in August for you guys?
Typically, I close the third Saturday in August, but also this year, because Labor Day is so late, it just seems like an odd time, but I also, schools are starting on September 1st. I'm already next week losing two of my lifeguards because they have to go back to college.
Right.
So that's the big concern I always have, is trying to fill staff.
Sure.
Will we be able to use some of the, was it the CARES Act? Are they here?
Well, we'll be able-
Or the, I forget what it's called.
Yeah, the CARE Act, yeah.
We'll be able to cover all the expenses.
The expenses.
Not the lost revenue, and that's where the majority of it is.
I'm sorry?
It covers expenses that we have related to COVID.
Yes.
It doesn't cover lost revenues.
Oh, okay, yes, okay.
Where our big hit is this year. So yes, we are, every single penny we're accounting for in a spreadsheet. Cindy can track that every day, Ann can track it every day, and so we will try to use our allocation for every piece of it that we can.
Right.
So do you, so will that help to reduce, though, this deficit, right?
The number's already in here. We've already assumed.
I see, thank you. Thank you.
Well, then also, too, with my concession stand, because I'm, I don't have the high profit items, it's all prepackaged. I mean, that's why our revenues are down so much, because they typically don't want to just come get candy and, and ice cream.
Well, and again, I guess kudos to you and, and to your team there working at the pool, because this was a, no small undertaking for you to get things ready and for everybody to help make it work, so.
Yeah, every day I have someone telling me, "Thank you for opening and thanks for being there."
And so do we. And we get it, too. It's great feedback from the citizens that we hear. So great.
Right.
You're doing great.
I did forget to also, at the very end, Trevor Wilkinson arranged a group of volunteers to come and paint all the playground equipment, the horses and the turtle, before he opened, and I forgot to mention that before, previously, but I did send him a thank you, but I wanted to publicly acknowledge his efforts of doing that.
Thank you and thank him and
Yeah.
and his helpers.
Yep.
Could we at the city send a more formal thank you?
We could.
To Trevor, I handwrote him one and mailed it out, but I mean, we can do something else, too.
Sign our names, Horace?
I would suggest we acknowledge him on Facebook, because that seems to be probably our biggest, our broadest audience. So we can have Jenny do that and maybe post a picture or two.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion to, to direct staff to make a Facebook post? No, no, okay.
That, it's not on the agenda unless we put it under "consider changes." Well, thank you, and thanks again for everything you've done for this, this year, and hopefully we get through it, and next year we don't have to deal with that kind of stuff, so.
You want to be so lucky.
Yeah. Okay, Mayor, all the personnel and staff reports. I was hoping Kirsten was here, because she had a retirement. Donna, Donna retired from the-
Yes.
15 years, was it?
Donna Gregus retired on July 31st.
Friday, huh?
Yeah, saw that on Facebook, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank her for her service here. Cindy, you have something?
Yeah, someone just asked for just a brief update on elections. Obviously, there's an election next Tuesday. So the mandated mask ordinance, or that the governor put out, just for your information, the poll workers will be required to wear masks, but anyone coming in to vote, because it's their right and it's by federal law, they will not be required to wear masks. We'll highly encourage it, but just so the right message gets out, we won't turn people away because they don't have a mask to vote. We'll do the same precautions. We'll be cleaning every half hour, 45 minutes. We'll be, we've got new guard, Plexiglas guards. If you see them up on the counter as you go out, they're, we're using them right now at the front counter, but those were purchased with the road to, route to recovery funds for elections, but we're multi-purposing them. We've got seven of those, so that should help. We've got masks, we've got gloves, we have face shields, so, but we do have over 700, I think we're getting like 750 of either in-person or absentee mailed votes already. So I don't anticipate a big turnout the day of the election. Think it'll be a lot like April.
Okay, thank you. Get out and vote, and if you can, do it early, and while you're doing that, make sure you fill out your census, so we get counted here. Chris, can I get a couple things? Sure. I just saw, I was saying, in the last week, I have gotten a lot of great kudos from the public about our plants, our hanging plants out there. It's really nice to get, because they said, once again, as they say, every year we have great ones, so I got a lot of them in the last week or 10 days. And I'd also like to give a shout out, kudos to both chiefs for allowing their departments to participate in gentleman's 90th birthday parade, drive by Swift Haven the other day. And the BFW. And, oh, and the BFW, who's not present, but yes, the BFW did an honor guard presentation in front, he's a 20-year veteran, retired from the service in 1967, so he's been retired two and a half times longer than he was in. But he was in 20 years, but, yeah, but yeah, really, really made his day with the, you know, just having that, and you guys leading off, and you guys bringing up the rear was great. Great, thank you, guys. Thank your crew for me, please. Thank you. And Mayor, thanks for, you were in it, too, so thank you. I didn't have only you, oh, yeah, you were there, so appreciate it. He didn't know me, though. Thank you, Breanna. Okay, anyone else? Okay, then we'll look for a motion to go into one of these closed sessions.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.891851E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business when, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, discuss and consider sale of city land in the industrial park, and motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.851G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adapted by the body with respect to litigation, in which it is or is likely to become involved, discuss and consider, to Burdick Street.
Second.
Any discussion?
That's a lot of words.
Roll call. Roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Braun?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Uh, Reynolds?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.